This isn't a meeting of the Reedfield Town Office, is it? It's a meeting of the Reedfield Select Board.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
You said it was a Town Office meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of March nineteenth.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the Reedfield Select Board for March nineteenth. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Thank you. I will move on to warrants thirty-nine and forty. And Dennis Price this quarter, and with review of warrants.
Hello, hello, welcome. So, we're looking at the first warrant we can talk about, which I believe is the fourteen-five-thirty-eight-twenty-eight, and that is payroll. And so that's pretty self-explanatory. The three-seventy-four-nine-forty-seven-twenty-six. If you take a look at warrant thirty-nine, you can see there are some big things that you might notice. Twenty-six thousand seven ninety-five fifty-six for cushion construction. I think that's the last payment.
Next to the last.
Next to the last.
Penultimate.
The penultimate one for all of you grammarians. We have nothing else that's too much. The school obviously catches your eye. And I think for the most part, everything else seems in order.
You asked about the town of Winthrop earlier.
Yes, the town of Winthrop, yes. Could you clarify? That's a big one, yeah.
Yeah, so it's twelve thousand dollars and change for our second half of our ambulance service contract payment. So twenty-four thousand and change total, and we're due half of that in April.
So sort of a one-off. Well, I guess, second off, I suppose.
Yep.
When do we get the next year's charge for the ambulance?
It's a good question. I'll have to look into that. Yeah.
Just want to make sure we get it.
I think it's sometime in May or June, but it's not. It's usually after we're engaged in the budget. We've already had to make our estimates, and then the numbers come in typically.
Maybe you could ask them future years to... I mean, they've got to have an idea this time of year.
Yeah, I certainly do.
Do they charge us per resident?
Yeah, it's a flat fee per resident. Two dollars and something is what it has been, so they would just adjust that if necessary.
I'm moved. Are you done?
I think I am. I think I'm going to make a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
KV cog?
Yes.
For signs?
Road posted, Heavy Road Limited, Heavy Weight Limited.
Oh, you get that from those guys?
We get it from them, yeah. They do bulk ordering. One of the many services provided by KV cog. And, yeah, so they give us...
At a slight fee?
Yeah, it's pretty modest. I think it was a hundred signs for a hundred and something dollars.
Wow, that's pretty modest.
And they're that bright orange color, so their eye patch.
Yeah, they're plasticky, they're big, so it's a pretty good deal.
I noticed there were several payments, okay, two, made to residents, a general fund, Guile Hall. Is that because people paid deposits to use the room and then receive it back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then my last one is Vertran, the maintenance on the elevator. Is that an annual kind of maintenance, or did we have an issue?
We had an issue, but I'm going to be addressing that in my town manager report.
Okay, great, thank you.
To be continued.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve warrants thirty-nine, thirty-nine A and B and forty, in the total sum of three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Oh, second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants thirty-nine and forty, and any subsets thereof in the amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Is there any discussion on the motion? Further discussion on the warrants? All in favor? Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, sir.
We'll move on to town staff reports, and I believe it's just you, Eric, this month. I mean, this issue.
It is, it is. Well, I mean, I certainly could go. Would you want to do select board communications first, or am I up? I can be up.
You're right, I'm not reading this in order, am I?
Bruce?
The bifocals are stacking forth here. Let's go ahead with select board communications. Do any members of the select board have anything they would like to communicate?
Yes.
Please.
For the family fun day, we have the Lafayette Lodge, number forty-eight, are going to do a breakfast again.
Oh.
And they have a project graduation that they do for the graduating class. That's where the money goes from the breakfast. Union Meeting House is going to do a yard sale and maybe another event. And the Friends of the Library will do the soaking wet.
And this is in August?
August eleventh, the same day as the Beanhole Supper and the library book sale.
Which is always the second Saturday in August.
Yes, and our own Dennis Price is looking into giving us a comedy improv.
A comedy extravaganza, yes.
Right here in Reedfield.
Yes, I think Capital City Improv.
Right here in this room.
That's right, right here in this room. We're going to set this up, I think, and we're going to have a comedy improv show here. And, you know, see if we can't laugh at the Town Office. How often does that happen?
Laugh in or laugh at?
Laugh with. How about we do that? Yes, laugh with.
Okay, this is the one.
Oh, it is.
That's one I signed, only I had to sign.
Oh, okay.
He's got the folder right there.
Yeah, the folder's right here.
Okay, thank you.
Sean will distribute that eventually.
Yeah, I will. He's just getting in there.
Let's continue. Any other select board members?
I...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the public who came out for our public budget meeting last Thursday night. And I hope that there will be more people who come who may have questions when we have our next one in approximately a month. That was it.
Thank you. John?
Couple of things to report from the Board of Assessors' meeting, and you should have something in your packet. One has to do with the business property tax. There's a letter that is going out. The three-page with the form for equipment list is going to be going out to business owners in town just to explain the program to them and also explain the reimbursement program. I think it's important for all businesses to pay close attention to this, especially if they get personal property tax bills. There are some people who do qualify, or their equipment qualifies for reimbursement from the state. So very important to read this, don't just throw it away. Check it out and fill out the form, and you could qualify for some reimbursement. The second thing is a policy for combining parcels for tax purposes. And you've got basically two forms in front of you. One is the original one, and the other one is marked up with some changes. What's been happening is people who own two, three, or four lots, say in a subdivision or just a piece of property that they bought, happen to have four separate lots. They pay for four separate building lots, plus whatever structures they have on one of those lots. So in order to, how can I say this properly?
Reduce the burden?
Reduce their tax burden and, in effect, add that tax burden to other taxpayers. They take those four lots and they combine them into one lot. So they're now paying for one building lot and whatever structure happens to be on there. Been running into some issues. Our new tax assessor is doing a great job. Of course, this is right in his wheelhouse, because he was working with this when he was at the state. And he is proposing some changes to our policy. It would, they would take effect going forward, because everything that has happened so far is grandfathered. From my understanding, if those lots are in a subdivision, they have to be, there would have to be a change in the subdivision. If anyone who has combined, say, two, three, or four lots into one big one, if they decide they want to sell an end lot to somebody, that would violate the subdivision rule or approval. So they would have to go back to the planning board and get that subdivision revised, if the planning board so wishes to do that. So it's created some situations. And what it does basically is it does put an added burden on the taxpayers, on the property taxpayers in town by doing that, by combining these lots. So we'd like to put a stop to that somehow. Either by putting full value of the four lots on that one big lot that ends up being combined, or not allowing those lots to be combined into one. So it's something that a tax assessor is working on, and stay tuned, I guess. And this is a policy, so this is something that the board would...
We would approve.
The Board of Assessors?
No.
The Board. Well, the Board of Assessors would bring it to the select board for approval.
So this is initial language?
Yes.
Yeah.
Prior to this, there had never been a written policy.
Yeah.
Right. So David is doing a good job of giving us that shape.
And he showed us on the map, these lots. You can see there's a dotted line that goes down one bit of lot and divides them.
Yeah. And I also think, maybe just to piggyback on what John said, it's not necessarily that we are prohibiting the combining of parcels. We are advocating for doing it through a method that makes it through the deed so that it is truly one parcel. And I think that's important to know.
Now, may I ask a question? Now, you said this is a new policy, so the policy in here that is not marked up, that is not an already existing policy?
That's just Dave's first draft. The markup includes a lot of Gary's suggested changes, which may or may not come through fully. They're still reconciling some of their differences of opinion on how best to approach this issue. So I think that they're going to be working on coming up with a reconciliation draft, more or less, bringing that to the assessors for review and consideration. Once that gets approved through whatever means they feel is appropriate, it'll then come to the select board for full review and discussion.
So it's an FYI?
Yeah.
The first draft was something that he put together initially. And then he did some research. He went online, he looked at a lot of different towns' situation, and put some language in there, and now he and Gary are, you know, going through the thing, trying to get something solid done.
Well, I think that I'm pretty on top of things, and I had no idea that was what was here. And so looking at anyone else who would be reading this, which is online, I think it would be nice if we're having anything put in to our packets that it either has explanation with it, or if it's something that's authored, it really should have an author and a date, unlike what revision it is. You know, like this is just a draft copy from the CEO on such and such a date. Doesn't really have to have explanation, because at least then we know who it was from and what it was about.
Right.
And then I just want to ask a clarifying question to see if I have this right from my time on the assessing board. So when you have these separate lots, they all have their own road frontage and their own primary building lot.
Right.
Acreage, and then there is the back acreage, which is priced or valued at a different, lower rate.
Yep.
And so the problem we're having here is if people are taking multiples of those and putting them together, almost everything is being valued at the lower back lot rate per acre.
For assessing purposes.
For assessing purposes.
Right, yeah.
Which then means that, let's say that they receive a five-hundred-dollar reduction in a tax bill, then that five-hundred dollars gets spread out across the rest of the taxpayers in town. It's not that it goes to any one person directly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And because it was consolidated in that way, just for assessing purposes, they can still sell that property at full value, because it wasn't combined into a single parcel for, as it would be for a subdivision or through the deed process. So that's part of the issue, is they're maintaining the value, but reducing what they pay for that value. So that's the equity issue that kind of spurred some of this discussion.
I think that needs to be made really clear, because I didn't really understand that. And you were getting at that with what you were saying. And so the idea here is if you want to combine your parcels, you need to combine them completely. That's the avenue you're pursuing.
By deed.
By deed. And then that could reduce your tax burden, and that would be reasonable to all the other owners in town. But you can't, you're saying that you're looking at not having people reduce it just to lower their tax burden, but maintain all the value for selling them as separate parcels.
Right.
Yeah, because it was never done through the deed process.
And this has been done for years, and it's not just here, it's all over the state. So it's not...
Having David in that capacity, who, like John said, this is his purview in every way. And he was very clear to, and once we get to a point where I think we have enough ready to present, having David sort of be here, I think, would be important.
Yeah, agreed.
Because he's just super knowledgeable.
He made me understand it, and it was, I was just mesmerized. Okay, David, whatever you say.
See, being on the boards is so fun.
Oh, it's interesting.
You learn a lot.
It really is.
You really do.
Thank you. Do you have any other board members?
Can I do my board communications?
Sure.
I want to say congratulations and continued good work to the Recreation Committee. I know that we appointed Mr. Shawn Keegan to the board. I often see the head of it, whose name escapes me at this moment. Hannah, yes, Hannah. And I just want to say that I know they had an Easter egg hunt. I know they were doing things outside. I know they're gearing up right now for activities outside and things like that. But I just want to stress, and I know I've been a mouthpiece for this, although I would love to have a free beach in Reedfield, but these guys are really working to bring some cool stuff, some alternative ideas. They are trying their hardest to get people in Reedfield outside to play. And I just hope that if you have young kids, if you think you don't have the time, if you think you... Please check it out. I know they are doing some sign-ups right now. They're trying their hardest to get the programs together. I know as a select board, we are committed to making sure that there are spaces in Reedfield that are open for recreation and outdoors, the fields, the trails. And it's only worth it if people are there to enjoy it. So please continue to check out those things and the information that you get from the town. And I know that the Facebook page, there's a Reedfield Recreation Facebook page that is also active as well. So that's just my big kudos to them. Get outside and play.
Thank you.
I would have one more, just quick thing.
Sure.
And that's on the solar power situation. Just for more, for my information, have we sent any emails out to try to get a group of us together with...
That's under New Business tonight.
I'm sorry?
That's under New Business tonight.
It is.
Yes.
Excellent.
The approach, anyway, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. I just wanted to mention that last Thursday, I welcomed a regional group of AARP age-friendly communities who had a meeting up at the Torsey Church. And there were quite a few communities represented. It was a primarily Western Maine group of communities. And I must congratulate them, and obviously our own Age Friendly Committee as well, because there are now fifty age-friendly communities, AARP age-friendly communities in Maine, which on a percentage basis of the number of towns in the state or municipalities in every state, were the highest in the country. So you do hear discussion about, you know, the graying of Maine and its aging and so on and so forth. Well, obviously, we're responding with a higher level of concern and attention to it. And so I want to, I didn't stay for the meeting itself, unfortunately I couldn't, but very, very active group up there and very, very involved. And several residents from our community who are on that Age Friendly Committee were participating as well for the entire day. So very pleased with that. Any other select board communications? Eric, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Start with maintenance and infrastructure. The heavy loads limited signs that we talked about, the bill that came due, just in time to take them down. We expect that over the next couple of weeks to a month, that as conditions dictate, we will be pulling those signs down and allowing regular traffic on our roads. Of course, we want to make sure that the water is out of the base, the frost is gone, and that they're not going to suffer any damage as a result of that. So just a heads up that that change is coming. The plow and sander have been removed from the one-ton truck and prepared for storage. And hopefully, they're going to stay out of that truck for the next six or eight months. So that has happened. The holder is being prepared for sale or trade, so we're doing some final work on that. Some cleaning, some, a little bit of grinding and painting to make it presentable and usable. Keith performed a few different repairs at the library over the past couple of weeks. And as far as interior work, the next project will be not remodeling, but patching and painting in the clerk's office.
Just real quick, he's fixing the drop box, right?
He will also be doing some work on the drop box after it comes back from Central Maine.
Book drop box?
There's a trade school, I guess, for high school students in Augusta.
Oh, they're going to fix it.
And they're going to be doing the grinding and the painting. He's doing some work on the spring system on the inside that makes it a soft landing for the books. But, yeah, I'm very pleased to see him becoming more involved in the physical building maintenance. It's been a necessary thing as we move ahead. Brush and culvert cleaning is coming up in the next couple of weeks, now that the snowbanks have melted back. I will back up and finish up with the town truck. We also did some cleaning work to that and painted the rear end of it, where it had some rust coming in from the salt spreading that happens. Also, we cleaned it well and put on the two new decals for the town on the side of the doors. So now our truck is properly marked.
Yeah.
And it looks pretty. So we're going to continue with that, keeping it up. And it will be receiving fluid film to, once the rust is taken off from the winter season, clear it up and put on some protective coating. The...
What is the fluid film product?
It's something...
Like an undercoating type?
It's something of an undercoating, yeah. I know there's three or four different types. It's not like a zinc-based, it's an oil emulsion-type based. And it sticks and kind of penetrates into the rust. So... Let's see. Okay, yeah, membership, members of the road committee and town staff did review with engineers the salt sand shed last week, so we had two engineers come and look at that. So we're going to be getting some competitive prices on that work. And the Town Office elevator sustained damage during a recent rental event. And this has been a chronic problem for us. It seems every three months, we have one of the elevator gates being pushed or pulled off the track. People really want to use their arms to close or open that door on either side, and it goes off the track, and it's very hard to fix, because it is, in fact, an automatic device. The cost this time around, we were paying eight hundred bucks, close to, just to fix the damage temporarily in order to fully fix it and get things back on track to prevent this for, maybe not forever, but just for a few years, maybe, is going to be fairly expensive. Sixteen hundred to two thousand dollars. The cost of switching over to a manual gate that people can just slide, open and close, is going to be less than that. And so I'm recommending that we switch to the manual gate as opposed to the automatic.
I know exactly what you're talking about. This is an elevator that was installed after the fact, right? And so there's a door that you open, and then there's another door?
Yeah, it's a little foldy accordion one.
Yeah, the foldy accordion door, that's the one that continues to have an issue?
Exactly.
I know exactly what you're saying. And it's infuriating, because it doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't. So we're going to make it make sense. We're going to have it, it's got the little handle, you're going to push it. It will be very easy to do.
Yeah.
And it will make it much easier to fix in the future and less expensive.
And there's no sense in fixing an automatic one over and over and over.
Yeah, which is what we've been doing. And, you know, one side has to be fixed, and I know that the other side is going to go, you know, short orders. So we're just going to replace both of them and avoid that issue.
I think we should just get an elevator operator to be there full-time.
Second floor, small appliances, homeware. And Eric, I also, is it also, is it one of those things where you have to hit the button and it automatically works, but there's a handle?
Yeah.
The only reason is we remodeled an old building in Monmouth and retrofitted it with a similar setup, and it's the exact same.
Yeah, and it's slow. I mean, you push the button, you have to get inside, wait for the door to close, and then push the button, and it slowly closes. And so people are very tempted to think...
Especially with that handle sitting there.
Everything is, it's not working. So anyway, we're moving ahead on that.
Good, thank you.
However, this was not a retrofit.
Oh, this was, yeah, original.
That whole hall was built to put that elevator in.
Yes, but it wasn't original to the building, was it?
No.
No.
But that elevator was put in, was the only elevator put in that shop.
Right, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-five, something, thirty years ago. Administration and personnel advertising is up for two positions. We have the full-time seasonal maintenance position, as well as a full-time seasonal beach superintendent. And I included in your handouts both of those hiring notices in case you know any young adults or capable adults or teachers who might be interested in particularly that beach superintendent position to work for the town. The beach superintendent is a bit of a shift in approach. One of those creative approaches that the rec board is working towards. In the past, we've had about four or five different individuals working sixty hours a week, split up shifts to manage the beach, which was a bit challenging just from an administrative perspective. But we had Tom Donigan, who did a lot of that for us. He's no longer working or volunteering in that capacity. And it's becoming quite evident that having volunteers manage what really is a part-time job is not an effective way and not a long-term solution for us. So we're moving to a model whereby we're going to hire someone forty hours a week to actually manage the beach and not just be there to collect money, hopefully helping with programming and other activities during the course of the summer. And we will have some part-time volunteers to cover, you know, twenty, thirty hours a week, or maybe even more, to do that, to make up that difference that we had. So by condensing this, we're going to be able to pay a little bit better, get someone with more skills in the way of a recreational management, or perhaps even beach or waterfront coordinator-type skill set. But in any event, we're hiring for that. I think it's going to be an interesting and, I think, very good decision for us to head that direction.
Yeah.
But we'll find out. If it doesn't work out, we'll try something different. But we'll find out. If it doesn't work out, we'll, we'll try something different.
And do we have funds to cover that?
We do, we do, because before we were paying eleven dollars an hour, sixty hours a week. Now we're going to be able to pay twelve to sixteen, depending on the skills, for forty. So we have the funds available.
Perfect.
And we also are coordinating with Sean Keegan, who is going to be able to bring in, committed to bring in volunteers to manage the rest of the time, so.
I understand they're also going to give lessons?
We are working to, to get somebody into, yep. We are working to get somebody in to do swim lessons. It's been a little bit of a challenge, but I think Sean has a lead or two, and I am going to be dedicating, dedicating a lot more time this week to starting to wrap up some of that planning for the summer for the rec board and for the beach, so.
I'm sorry to tangentialize, but do, do we have any idea about that, the grant that we had asked about for the...
I talked with Hannah about it today. Sean and I are probably going to get together sometime in the next week or two to get back together and make sure that we're on track with that.
Thank you, I just curious. Thank you.
Yep. So if you know anybody that's interested in either one of those positions, please send them our way. We're trying to get this wrapped up by Friday, the twentieth of April. We are in the process of seeking reimbursement from FEMA for the damage that was incurred as a result of that windstorm last October. So that, we had a meeting last week, I've got another meeting this week with FEMA folks to, to get that moving along. We have been given the green light to proceed with the grant that we received for the parking lot expansion and other trail improvements with the, the grant from the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry Recreational Trails Program. So that's green lighted, and we'll be starting work on that. And last Thursday, Bruce talked about the AARP. Again, I want to reiterate that and say thank you to our, our members of our age-friendly committee for their work in bringing that to Reed Field and participating. I have a couple of pretty important announcements. I'm very excited to point out that we have the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce a holding event in Reed Field this coming Thursday at Merrill Security, which is the one that we discussed the sale of that building with a few, probably a year ago now, maybe more. And so they're sponsoring an event, and it is going to be a chamber event, and I very much hope that we're able to get some Reed Field businesses to attend. I also sent out an email to the board and our members that have been appointed to the Reed Field Enterprise Committee, hoping we can get a, a little bit of a, a spark from this event.
And where is Merrill Security?
It is right up, kind of behind the...
Next to the fire station.
Emporium, next to the fire station.
What was the bank?
Oh, okay, great, yes. Okay, Roger that, thank you.
Yeah, so Thursday, five to seven, you don't have to come for the whole time, just maybe pop in and say hello, but I, I really enjoy these kinds of events in Gardner, and I, I'm excited that we're doing something here that's similar.
Good.
Nomination papers are available and due back April thirteenth. We have a public hearing on the completed town meeting warrant coming up, April twenty-sixth at the town office at six-thirty PM. This is the counterpoint to the meeting we had last week. Last week was our opportunity to discuss changes and recommendations on directions with the budget. Now that that's been completed and the rest of the budget process, fourteen or fifteen meetings and lots of public discussion, now that that's been done, we will be reviewing the ordinances and the warrant itself and talking about some of the content, not so much about whether or not it would be on the warrant, because that process will be completed, but the twenty-sixth is a good time to come learn about exactly what has been decided through that process. And the last announcement I have is that there will be a prescription drug takeback at the transfer station on April twenty-eighth from ten to two. So if you have any old or expired medications, please bring them down. That material is taken by a state trooper, so we don't have to worry about security in that, in that setting, so.
Nice.
And that's my report.
Questions for Eric? I have one. The sidewalk sweeping, do we do that, or is that, or do we do that at the same time as the road sweeping?
We take care of the sidewalk sweeping.
Okay. And when do you expect we normally would be doing that?
It'll be sometime in April.
So it's an April thing?
It's an April thing, yeah.
That's all my question is.
We let the snowbanks melt back, and then we let it dry out some.
Sure.
Yep. To follow up on that, now that we're getting rid of the holder, this cat, will the cat be in that same capacity used?
Well, we actually haven't been using the holder for that activity. What we have been doing is using the, it's a special attachment for, I won't, it's not the weed whacker, but it, I guess it is.
Okay.
It's a powerhead.
I got you. It's this thing.
It's a paddle broom, and, and it does a pretty good job of clearing the material off without...
I wasn't sure if that was a, like a bigger...
Yeah, the holder's actually quite, quite big for doing that kind of work, and I think it can cause a little bit of damage too. So we haven't been using it for that. We've been doing it by hand, so.
I have one question that's semi-beach-related, and maybe this is to Bruce and to Eric, but we had talked with the Power Boat Association about their racing thing, and I think we said we'd get back to them in March. Have we responded to them?
We have not, but I did speak with Hannah today, and she will be sending back a, an email basically saying that they, they, she believes, and the, the rec board believes that they don't have much of an interest in entertaining that discussion at this point. So I'll take that as a definitive answer on, on their part.
Can we ask the rec board to, to look into that?
That's who Hannah is, right?
Yes, Hannah Flamm, she's the chair of the rec board, so we did communicate about that also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we, I want to thank the age-friendly committee for their minutes of January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Cobbessy Watershed District minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and again, as John mentioned earlier, there's a, a couple of documents from the Board of Assessors as well. We don't have members of the public joining us tonight, so we will move on. Appointments, reappointments and resignations. We have the appointment of Martha Soul as ballot clerk, and I'm going to go ahead and just simply move that we appoint Martha Soul as, as a ballot clerk for two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Final warrant, final budget warrant review. So, in front of us, you have, I believe, the edited version that you see includes the legal review notes.
Yes, and then we have a clean copy following that.
And then a clean copy follows. So now's our opportunity to, we've gone through at, at the last board meeting, and we've made, we've approved those spending items, if you will, that, that we wanted to say yes to.
Yes, and there have been no changes to the spending items.
And there's been no changes there. There have been a couple changes that bounced back to the budget committee, is that correct?
Yes, because...
They would need to meet and do a quick update?
They would, because what you approved last week, there were some changes that had happened just recently with the, the borrowing structure for the Monarch Lake Dam.
Right.
So they do need to approve that, yes.
Or not approve it, as they...
Or, or not approve it, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. And so they are meeting before the warrant is finally posted?
Yes, they will be.
So we can assume that on the twenty-sixth, we will have the warrant for review, and it'll probably have those two recommendations in it?
Yes.
Well, it will have those two.
It, it will, it has to.
Yep. Okay, great. So I want to dispose of this in whatever degree of review that you want. We can go through it. I think, I think there, probably what we should just do is, is see if anyone has any particular questions or comments, and try to work from the front towards the back. How's that sound?
Yeah, good.
So, with that said, the floor is open.
How many other people are taking out papers? How long is it? It's going to be Christine. Is that the kind of question?
Until April thirteenth.
Gotcha, thank you, sir.
Taking out the papers is not what counts.
That's right.
There was a suggestion made by council on Article thirty-five that I noticed was not made in the clean draft.
Article thirty-five.
In the draft, so I can't...
Yes.
To just call it a contingency account, I believe.
I think you probably kept this the same way because you didn't want to do any budget restructuring.
Let me review this one here, so through the town.
Let me see, twenty-five thousand, these are the side ballots.
And that comment was, was a...
A future thing we could do.
Yeah, it wasn't a hard recommendation.
I understand now.
She was looking to restructure it, and I said I liked it the way it is, basically.
So we do reserve the right to reject legal advice?
You do, and, yeah, you do, and I, in this case, I think that she, you know, walking into somebody's town meeting structure and looking at it and trying to understand how you got to where you are and what the, I won't say the culture, but what the, the past precedent has been and the approach that we take. Sometimes she just looks at things and says, "Well, you know, that's not quite how I would do it," but a lot of times we just discuss things, go through it, I explain why it is the way it is, or she explains why she'd like to see it changed, and we come to some kind of resolution. That's very much the case with these changes. We probably spent an hour and a half going through these and just detailing...
Are you referring to Number forty-one?
All of them, all of them.
All the comments, okay.
All the comments and, and changes, and ordinance, we did review the ordinances as well in depth, so.
But the ordinances, we are actually changing the, the approach language on the question.
Yes, we are.
They were.
And so that's just a better way of stating that?
It's a different way. I, I kind of, I think it's a bit clunky as far as the language goes, but as far as the legal aspect and the legal side of this, it is, in her opinion and I trust it, clearer from a legal perspective. The other option, as opposed to what's been done, of approving an ordinance that is essentially amendments that then is adopted by reference, which is what she's suggesting. The other option is to just repeal and replace, to use that phrase, which I don't really like, but to, to just say, "Okay, well, we're making some changes, but instead of just cataloging and approving those changes, we will be doing away with the old ordinance, and whatever the new one is, is what it is, and, and we'll adopt that new ordinance in, in its entirety." So that's the other option.
Okay. I'm happy now, and my other comment...
Well, we're glad, yeah.
Aren't you, because that means I might stop talking. But then there's Article forty-one. Did we used to have something on this, and Eric may not know the answer to this, so I'm deferring to others in the room, did we used to have something that said advisory? Because I know it has always been an advisory thing, and I know that legal counsel was to not have it there.
You mean printed on the ballot that this is an advisory question?
Right, because I'm just looking at this and saying, "Okay, so if someone sees this and they see that the vote was to continue doing that, and then we as the select board decide not to," I could see people very justifiably coming and saying, "Why did you do that when we voted? You can't do that."
Yeah, because it's always been advisory.
By law, it is advisory because we don't have a charter. And so I'm just, I always like to err on the side of putting in a little more language than a little less, just to make things clearer, but I know that we can't do anything that is suggestive in nature, so I'm just wondering what we have done in the past.
It wasn't directed to me, but I'm ninety percent, ninety-five percent, I'd say certain that that's never been included. It's always been just that language.
But in the explanation, it says it's advisory.
Yeah, the explanation.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right, we can't sway anybody one way or the other.
I mean, saying it's advisory isn't, is, I would think that would be appropriate. I could certainly bring that to legal and ask.
Yeah. I can't imagine that that would be sway, swayful.
I can see the issue coming up with what Catherine is saying.
Oh, yeah.
Because if all of a sudden they vote the opposite way, and the board at that time decides to go against that vote, then you're going to create quite an issue.
It could be in either case, if there's a change from the advisory vote.
And I'm not suggesting for anybody who's listening or watching this on tape that I'm going to change what I've been doing, because I, I am fine with this process. I just want to make this as clear as possible to the public and to the process, so.
And, you know, they, they can...
Well, I mean, it kind of begs the bigger question that why have it on the ballot at all?
Which is what council came up with.
Which is what council said.
Yeah, exactly.
I would rather have it on the ballot this year and have discussion about not having it on the ballot than at this time, as we get closer.
It does seem like a bit of a feckless afterthought.
Well, I mean, we do, what we do is we, we post a budget process now, and it is very well-defined and it's been established, so it seems like we're re-establishing every year, and we need to do that until we...
But wasn't it, wasn't it mentioned the first time around that this ballot question was going to be in there?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. I remember that.
Yep. So that's why, that's why, that's why I think, yeah, I think that's why we should honor having it in there until we actually have a town discussion.
Discuss whether that...
You know, the process...
If we're just going to go forward with this, then we don't have to ask.
Right. If the process is established now, what do you think?
And I think, you know, it's probably, it'd be a good idea when we go through this at the hearing to emphasize that that question is there because of, you know, prior practice, but that it is advisory only.
Yeah, and that was a very clear point that, that our attorney made, and we actually had a lengthy discussion about some of those hybrid town meetings that are starting to happen out in the world, where people who don't want to go as far as creating a charter but do want to have secret ballot, they're finding some interesting ways to approach this, and, and we did. We talked about the, I think it's Rumford where they have, you know, a, a town meeting, an open-floor town meeting to talk about issues that the select board believes are important and merit lengthy, informed discussion, and then they take a lot of the other budget items that are just rote, you know, expenditure lines, and put those into the, 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 the secret ballot, so people can just go through and check them off without really having the same level of, of discussion and discourse and education that happens with open-floor town meeting, so. But anyway, so, yeah, we talked about that.
Okay, I'm good.
Good point.
Other questions on this warrant? My assumption is that we would approve the draft tonight, then?
Yes.
Let's do it.
As, as, the clean copy would be, yeah.
And how did we phrase this the last time? Maybe Kristen knows that?
The last time we approved the warrant?
Right. Did we say we approve all articles as presented and recommended?
From the looks on her face, I would say she probably doesn't.
It's in the, like, that's what you had in the minutes from last time.
From justice last time?
Yeah.
Okay, let me just go back and...
Well, the last time we, we were voting on our, not the entire warrant to be presented, but what our recommendations were, so. I would think the motion would be to present this warrant to voters.
Okay, so we approved warrant articles seven through thirty-six with select board recommendations of yes on each article.
Right.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the, what is this thing called?
May I make a suggestion as you, just prior to you making that motion, just so we maybe capture one other thing? We do have two additional board, budget committee pieces of input, if you will.
It will be revised.
And so I would, I would ask that those be included.
Yeah, Article twenty and thirty-three.
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the clean copy draft warrant as presented, along with the additions of the two noted votes needed by the budget committee to be included.
I second that.
For the purpose of discussion, it's been moved and seconded, for the purpose of discussion, those two articles are Article twenty and Article thirty-three, just for reference. And that's only because there's been some...
Change.
Budget changes in the meantime, so they would want to take a quick look at that. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion?
None of the motion, but I do want to point out that now, once this is finalized, we will be putting out the annotated warrant, or as we call it, the explanation sheet, identifying what some of the rationales are behind this. So that'll be coming out this week or next, so.
Okay, good. And we're going to publish that again?
Absolutely. Well, I mean, publish on the town website. Absolutely. Well, I mean, publish on the town website and through the normal channel. We won't be putting it in as a full insert in the advertiser we've done in the past.
I think that didn't work well.
But we will be putting it out on the website and having it available at the town office.
Good. And fairly early on, so that's good.
Yeah, I mean, we're actually in quite...
Quite a bit ahead of time.
Quite a bit ahead of time.
Very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comment?
No.
All in favor of the motion? Thank you. We have a warrant.
Excellent.
We'll move on to the final draft of the revised animal control ordinance, which is in your packet. And this is an ordinance that repeal and replace might have worked for, I suppose.
It certainly could have.
It, but that's, anyhow, it has extensive, it has extensive changes to it. You've seen these changes in the first reading and the second reading has some changes as well, Eric?
It does, yes. And the town attorney had suggested those.
So, is the red the new?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
New from the first reading or new overall?
The, the, new overall.
New overall. So, there were no changes, or if there were changes from one to two?
Yes.
I can't recall the conversation. What were they?
Well, like, if you look at C, Animal Control Officer?
Yes.
So, we have cross-outs and then we have underlines for something was removed and replaced. I assume that was after we saw the first?
Yes, so it would be, I apologize, the notes from the town attorney were not included in this draft. But what happened was we had a first draft that was marked up by town staff. That then went to legal review and she recommended some more changes and actually some removing quite a bit of language that was repetitive of state law. And so, that was the reason for that. And so, I'm trying to figure out, I believe, actually...
So, to Catherine's point, I mean, we see some of the red that's been edited by either underlined or cross-out, so those would be what happened between the first and second reading?
Yes.
Because the black cross-out is what happened after the first reading.
That's correct. And so, then we had the red come in.
Or it could be the other way around. I'm trying to figure that out right now.
Okay.
No, because I think...
Well, either way, I like, I like what they've done because it's so much easier to read.
Yes, because we still had dangerous dog in there at the first reading and we didn't say taking it out, but I understand why it was taken out and I'm fine with that because I think it cleans this up and it puts things under current state law, which means we don't have to keep revising this whenever state law changes.
Yes, and so, that's, that gives me the answer then. I was trying to figure out which came first. I believe it was the red that came first and the black is what has been added to the red.
So, when you say the legal counsel took a lot of wording out, that's why, that's all?
That's right, yeah.
So, the bottom line is, if you look at the actual clean draft, it's a much tighter document and if you read that, it's very definitive and it...
So, instead of six pages, we're down to...
It's like two and a half.
We're not making unnecessary regulatory laws.
Exactly. We're not restating statute. We are clearly stating what we believe we would like to do under home rule in addition to state law.
Right.
And that's, that's exactly where we landed, in my view. With rare exception, so.
And I did read very carefully that livestock is still in here.
Yes, it is.
Because that was something I know we did not have previously and that was an issue.
Bottom of page three, yeah. And I also like the domesticated, there's no such thing as domestic animal.
Right, domesticated animals.
It is a verb.
Would someone like to bring forward a motion on eighteen-one-oh-nine?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the clean draft of the animal control ordinance as it is presented in this packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve forwarding to voters the animal control ordinance as presented in this packet. Discussion?
I'd like to thank everyone who worked on this, especially Anna and Robin and also legal counsel, because it looks like there was a lot of work that went in from all three of them.
There was.
Absolutely.
Not that others didn't work on it, but a big thank you to those folks.
And I just, I just think that, you know, when you, when you see something like this where you're just condensing, you are making it more efficient language, it also helps Reed Field and our animal life, so thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Is that a yes, John?
Yeah.
I just didn't see, you were probably faster than all the rest of us.
Forget it.
Sorry.
Quick draw.
Would you prefer to have a break before this next discussion on the property tax assistance program or after, when we start new business?
Just do after when we start new business.
Okay, great.
I like that.
We're moving forward with the final draft of the property tax assistance program, which was submitted for legal review. The most significant change, I think, there's several, I believe. There's certainly language changes and so forth. But the most significant change is the striking of the duration of residency requirement.
Yes.
And there are communities that have it on the books, residency requirements, and we had good reason to do that, we thought, as we put this together, because that was kind of one of the objectives. But legal counsel strongly recommends against having it and thinks that it would, if it went to court, it would be struck down. So, we don't want to risk that.
Even the homestead has a year requirement, right?
Yes, but I think for the purposes of this, since, and maybe I'm jumping here, but I think the idea that since we piggyback on all of the other various programs and this is sort of like a circuit breaker to a circuit breaker and a circuit breaker, that that's why they wanted this to come out, because the homestead, having the homestead requirement in there is going to take care of some of that. So, I guess in terms of having a Reed Field residency requirement, that's, that's at issue.
That's part of it. You know, the underlying issue, the same answer I got from MMA and our town council was that if it's not clearly established in state statute that a local municipality has authority in a area of taxation, that you shouldn't touch it. That it's, it's one of the very few areas where we don't, you know, home rule doesn't apply taxation. So, unless it's clearly stated that we have an authority, we ought not to try to...
Take one.
Present one.
Yes.
Like, we can't establish a sales tax in town Reed Field.
So, that's the basis, underlying.
And I would just kind of add a little extra point to what Eric was saying. We also check this out with MMA, so that we have fairly consistent legal advice on this. And so, for those communities that do have that duration residency requirement, they will probably be challenged at some point.
And that will cost way more than just fixing it right now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they'll probably fix it immediately or whatever, but we don't need to go through that.
I did get a good piece of advice or kind of, not advice, but just insight from MMA that most of the people we're looking to serve, if we are looking to serve seniors primarily or help that group, most of them have been here for that long anyway. So, it's not as though we're making the pie a lot bigger.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point, because when we discussed what the, what the size of that group was, it, you know, it was pretty hard to nail down to begin with, but it didn't seem that this would materially affect us.
Besides, we're trying to do something nice and then you get in a legal battle over it. It's just kind of productive.
Well, and we're not really seen as a retirement community, so it's not like we have people moving here to retire.
It's people who have already been here, who are retiring.
I also liked...
Well, this is not just, this is not driven by age.
Right, I understand that.
But I mean, that's a primary group we're trying to get...
To serve.
To serve, right.
I also liked the changes that were made for the appeal to the chair of the Board of Assessors rather than having that combined with the town manager, because I think that was the flavor of what we had discussed. We just couldn't quite figure out the wording, so I was really happy to see that. But I think one thing we didn't address in here was the comment made, oh, it's under section six and I don't think that I saw this in our clean copy, on the money distribution. Is it a first come, first served?
No, it's not a first come, first served.
So...
It's a total universe.
We addressed that under the section five with an additional, oh, so, five C, so...
There's no limit. If we have, we have fifty thousand supposedly that we're going to put in there.
Yep. Well, not supposedly, we do, yeah.
Available monies, yeah, as prorated among eligible applicants.
If it goes to seventy or eighty, which we don't anticipate it will, but that fifty thousand is not going to last forever.
No, it won't, and we have provisions later on for...
Then we need to get that money from somewhere else.
Yeah. But to your question, Catherine, it is five C that addresses that through the simple statement about appropriation or proportion among eligible applicants. So, prorated, that's the word I'm looking for.
Okay, so if it was to exceed what was left in the fund, everyone would receive an equal share?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone who's eligible. So, what we're trying to do is take away any kind of arbitrary or...
Any arbitrary deadline.
Yeah, or arbitrary decision-making throughout this, so, yeah.
That's just what I wanted you to know, thank you.
Just so the comments out there, we're hoping that this, this program is seated for a couple of years with that fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, three hundred and sixty bucks, you know.
The goal wasn't that it would all go in the first year, but we have the protection in place if that situation were to occur.
Well, you'd have to have more than a hundred and seventy-five eligible people.
Well, I think as we roll this out, you know, it'll take time for it to become, just like everything else.
Known.
Well, look at the people that don't, don't have the homestead.
Right.
I mean, that's been there for how long?
Lot more do now, and I mean, I'm glad, because it saves them a lot of money and it distributes the tax burden to, you know, a little bit differently than it would be otherwise, so.
For the purposes of moving forward, I'm going to move that we present to the town the property tax assistance program ordinance as it appears in the packet as the final draft.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, now we can move on to discussion. Any further discussion on the motion itself? I think we answered questions.
Same thing as before. Thank you to those who have worked on this. I know Dennis and Bruce, you've put a lot of time into this and Eric as well. And it's something we talked about for over a year now and I'm glad we were able to move on it fairly quickly and get this out there.
Right, and I'll mention that it was a goal of this entire select board and so, it's a goal I think we'll be able to look back on and accomplish as an accomplishment, so I appreciate it.
I'm going to, I'll vote in favor of this because I've been in favor of it right along, only there is a piece of it that I feel is missing and that is...
Oh, yeah.
The reimbursement, that whenever that property is sold back to the town, I think although it's not a big burden, if we use enough fifty thousand a year, it's a sizable burden to the other taxpayers and there should be, I feel there should be a reimbursement. So, I will vote in favor of this with reservations.
I accept your reservations. I, the, the thought on this particular item was not to create a taxing, tax banking situation. And I, and I understand how those work. They do become administratively burdensome if there's a lot of it. But duly noted and obviously every ordinance is subject to amendment in the future.
Well, hopefully, we won't have a lot of people in a position to have to...
Agreed. It would be pleasant not to have to resort all the way to here, but I hear you.
And that's something, as time goes on, this can be reviewed and any resident, of course, could ask for this to be reviewed, provided that it passes to begin with.
Yeah, exactly.
I also just want to say that this is one of the reasons why I wanted to join the select board, is to be involved in being able to help these types of folks and population that I know is here and I'm glad to have worked on it with y'all.
Great, and thank you, Dennis. Well, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, now you're no longer new because you've done something and we've proved it, so...
June, I don't get June.
We're on break for five minutes, three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes. We're back in session. We're moving on to new business and that's eighteen-one-twenty-three, which is to consider draft changes to the land ordinance, the land use ordinance. And so, this is very typical that there are declarations and amendments to the land use ordinance from year to year, as it constantly is reviewed and adjusted to reflect state statutes and so forth. So, in your packet is the draft changes and Eric, I'm, the land, the planning board has reviewed all of this.
They have and they had their, their public hearing. It was last week.
Okay.
And so, we actually just got legal, legal review back today and she had just one edit and two questions. So, I expect the best way to approach this would be perhaps to approve these changes and one option would be to leave it to council and the planning board and the CEO to finalize any additional changes beyond this. I mean, literally, it was, I think, two words, but of course, it can have a significant impact in the land use ordinance, but that's one option. The other option would be to, to have these come back on April thirtieth for a final, which is still more than a month, forty days before the town meeting, so certainly appropriate to consider that option as well. If you didn't feel comfortable, just delegating the final polishing of these to other entities.
Do you have a memory of what the two?
There was one in the section about driveways and it was a definition, it was on the page fifty-nine and the term driveway...
Say page fifty-nine?
Fifty, yeah.
Yeah, because you're pulling out pages of the land use ordinance.
There was an inclusion of the phrase, essentially, the term driveway as used in this ordinance shall mean. So, it was a bit of a clarification.
Of driveways?
Yeah, it was more of a throughout as opposed to just in this one section. So, there was a clarification there. And then the other, the questions, I'm having a little bit of a hard time remembering exactly what those were, but they, they seemed to be, oh, there was a recommendation that under the definition, there was one area where the definition was suggested to reference another section and she suggested that that reference be removed, I'm trying to find it, and that the actual definition be included in the definition section.
Is it on the campground reference article?
Yes, that's the one.
On page one-one-eight?
She said it makes the most sense to just put the definition there and have the section reference the definition or not.
Right.
So, like I said, they were pretty, pretty minor. Yeah. But I didn't think it was quite right to bring in new changes when we'd already published the information for the, for the meeting.
I would like to make a motion to approve inclusion of the suggested land use ordinance amendments as proposed, as submitted in our packets with the addition of the suggestions made by legal counsel.
Second.
So, my question is on that, on the wording of the motion.
Okay.
If, if the, if it's going to have some further review, is it possible that changes could be more substantive?
No, I don't believe so. The, the changes that I saw, the two that I referenced or three that were discussed out of the four, they were all in that, in that vein clarifying but not substantive, in my view.
Maybe I should amend that to read the changes suggested by legal counsel as of... Maybe I should amend that to read the, the changes suggested by legal counsel as of this date, so the ones that have already been received.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Who, who seconded that motion?
I seconded it, that's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, they've had their public hearing on this?
They did, yes.
Okay, and then on, on the other ordinances that we have, I'm just asking a side question here, when do we actually present those to the public?
Those ones that have been approved will be included with the.
On the warrant?
With the warrant, yeah.
Okay, on the twenty-sixth, so at that point, we would take any feedback on those three items, well, we could take it on any item, I guess.
You could on, on any item, but really, at that point, those ordinances would, should be very much close to being finished up. You, you don't wanna go too much further than, than. I mean, in theory, you have anything up to ten days from the date of the, the town meeting to post the warrant and the ordinances. So, not that I would ever recommend you pushing it all the way to, to ten days before, but the fact that you, you have the public hearing, the idea would be that you have the hearing on the final, or very much. Very much final ordinances before any changes are made, so, or. You don't wanna make any changes after the fact.
My thought here is, I'm just trying to globally look at ordinances a little bit.
Yep.
And so, my thought is, we know that the land use, they, they had a public hearing, is should we have a public hearing, if you will, on those other ordinance items separate from the meeting on the twenty-sixth?
No, the, the twenty-sixth really is that, that hearing, that meeting, that discussion about those ordinances. So, it really is, it is a hearing on the ordinances in addition to the budget and the warrant.
As long as we post it and have that, we'll have those ordinances in the packet for the public to look at.
Right, and I believe the, but we need to state it as a public hearing, correct?
Yes, it, it is, and we've been calling it a public, a, a public hearing on budget and warrant.
Okay, and we've been trying to do that, or I think we have to do it, I'm not sure how Robin has phrased that to us, prior to the absentee ballots going out.
Yes.
Yes.
Since we've gone to the absentee ballot.
Well, there's a yes and no on that, but there's some legality areas there, but this town tries to do that.
Okay, great. Have we, we have not voted on this yet?
We've not voted, so we're taking any other discussion on the motion to approve as of, with the language as of this date, that includes the legal suggestions.
Yeah, let's do.
Okay, so I'm, my anticipation before we vote is if there were to be further changes, then we would deal with this at the April thirtieth meeting.
Yeah, and I would say.
Of a substantive nature.
Even, even perhaps at the twenty-sixth to make sure that, that those questions were clearly answered with the public present and able to consider them. So, that way, you wouldn't be having a hearing and then making changes after, I think that, that, in, in thinking about it, that the twenty-sixth, if there was anything to be done, that, that you could and should do it then.
Okay, I'd rather not do it then, because it's a public hearing.
Absolutely, I mean, you could have a meeting beforehand and then.
I'm assuming that this is gonna be as, as, as we anticipated, that.
Yeah, minor changes based on legal opinion, yeah.
Yep. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Next on the list is eighteen zero twenty-four, solar energy ad hoc committee. We have discussed and had a presentation at the board level about a solar energy project in the town of Reedfield, basically to serve the town's energy needs for all of its buildings. Which would be the library, the transfer station, the town office, and the fire department, and so we do wanna move that forward. Siting the project is certainly, there's been some discussion about that, and what I would really like to do is recommend, and I'll be happy to make a motion in regards to this. That we put together an ad hoc committee to basically finalize and review the solar energy proposal that Envision has, and any other possible competing proposals as well that may need to be pursued. And so, my thought was always that the budget committee itself, that we would wanna get a very thorough buy-in or review from the budget committee, because we're talking about fixing the costs for the town going forward, thirty to forty years for energy. So, this is a big thing, and we would want those folks to weigh in and advise us and give us good advice on that. The conservation commission, as you know, has been here concerned about the siting. I'd like to move that we create an ad hoc committee that would consist of two select board members, and to invite two members from the budget committee and two members from the conservation commission to participate in bringing, reviewing the solar energy proposals and any other solar energy options that we might pursue, and to report back in June.
I would second that motion.
And I, I wanna further state that the reason I want to involve the conservation commission in this is not solely because we had a discussion here about the siting of it on that property, but I also wanna pick their brains in terms of the conservation value to the town and the energy equation, if you will. I, I certainly have talked to a couple of members of those, of that committee on and off, and I, I think they could add some perspective for us in that area, be very useful to broaden the group. And obviously, that group could invite some citizens to participate with them in a non-voting capacity if they so desire.
I think it would be very helpful when you form that committee, providing that we approve that. To have an upfront explanation about the, I can't remember what they're called now, but the purchase credits and the whole way that system works, because I know that we had a citizen ask about that and wasn't sure that that was actually legal, or if it was legal, if it was correct, something to that conversation. And it was very clearly explained by revision how that process works and that it is completely legal, it was set up by the government to be used specifically for municipalities to make purchases like this.
Yes, I, I mean, I think it's a very thorough top to bottom kind of review.
But I think that needs to be done at the beginning, so that people aren't saying, well, okay, I'm just sitting here, and then I'm gonna say, well, but you can't really do this, so.
We wanna make it clear that it is legal, it is allowed.
Right, and so then, this is why it's worth putting your energy into looking at the benefits to the town and where it could be located and, and so on.
Yeah, well, I'll be very clear that, I mean, this is a project I wanna bring to fruition within the next year. This is something I think is very long-term benefit to the town, and many communities in Maine are pursuing these types of projects, so we're not, this is another case of we're not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
But we do want people to thoroughly understand, and it is possible that this size project for this small town may have some nuances and some financial ramifications that we, we wanna look at, so the more questions, the better. We'll answer them, do you think June's too aggressive? I think it, you know, it's very possible any ad hoc committee can come back and ask for.
A lot of the work has been done already, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Pretty much catching people up with what's been done, getting Andrew involved. I know one of the questions that was brought up is involvement of the school, and I know that Andrew said that the two cannot be mixed, but.
Yeah, yep.
I couldn't explain it beyond that, and that wasn't a satisfactory explanation to the people that were asking the question.
Yeah, and there were two reasons on that, basically, I mean, that, that governance actually encompasses four different towns, and so the marrying of the benefit for town of Reedfield and how you would parse that out, including parsing out the school portion that would apply to Reedfield students gets very complicated. And then it also sizes the project into an area that may make it not conducive for us to be a part of it. Once these projects get to a certain size, they become, at least for our purposes of what we wanna do locally, cumbersome.
Another question that pertained to the schools was, why couldn't we use school property to put our solar array, Reedfield's solar array on?
Yeah, once again, it's just not Reedfield.
Right.
Yeah, I think you wanna control your own destiny, particularly when you're talking about thirty or forty years.
Yeah.
And so, having a solar.
Yeah, 'cause who knows what's gonna happen in school districts and.
Solar cited on non-municipal land would, would be a concern of mine.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's completely out of the equation, but you, I, I just think there's some concerns with that. So, the motion's on the floor, and we did have a second, right?
Yeah, that was me.
All in favor? Let's move on to appoint two members to the solar ad hoc committee, and I think unless John thinks differently, probably John and I.
I nominate John Parent, Bruce Burgoyne.
Yeah, I second that.
I think we're volunteering.
No surprise, let me think about it.
Yes, yeah.
He's caught off guard.
Okay, let's call for a vote on that one.
And did you second this?
I did.
No, Chris did.
Chris did, okay.
I tried to, but she was on it.
All in favor? Thank you.
You guys are quick on that.
I'd also just say, as a matter of public record, that I think you guys did a stand-up job of, of.
Going after.
You know what, saying, you know what, yeah, we'll, we'll take back, we'll step back for a second, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna include all these people, I think it was very well done. I'm sorry that it had to, that, that, that it had to be kind of backtracked a little bit like that, but that's, I think, open-mindedness, not being stubborn, and you guys, I, I, we want this project, and, and this project is valuable to Reedfield, it's not gonna be held up or held hostage, nothing like that, but, but it's worth it to the town of Reedfield to figure out a way that everybody can work together and make it work.
I guess, yeah, I guess my bottom line is in two thousand and thirty-nine, nobody's gonna say, gee, they spent three more months on that and it cost us so much.
Right, 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 as they light up their holograms.
That's right. Okay.
Your holographic teachers.
And, and John, I'll, I'll take the lead of just conversing with the budget and conservation committee, I don't know, I don't know.
I'm sure the budget committee will be thrilled to meet further.
Well, I'm just hoping that, and, and I did word this as a couple of interested parties from each, so, I mean, they could just send one if they want to. Good, eighteen oh twenty-five is a discussion of current project planning and priorities, and basically, this just kind of rolls out from a discussion that, in our agenda planning that Chris and I have with Eric every other week or so. That we have a lot of projects coming upstream, and we probably oughta take a look at the timing of the management of them, so that they all have received the due diligence they need to and so forth. So, we may be helping Eric do some priority setting on a couple of those projects tonight, so Eric, I'm gonna turn the floor to you, and if you can kind of describe what we talked about.
Yeah.
Where we can help.
And I do appreciate you taking this up and considering, if I do look to the board for some direction on some of these things, 'cause we have a lot of stuff happening all at once. We have a lot of projects that are meaning to come to fruition this year and this spring, and a number more that are meaning to be initiated to be successfully completed in the coming fiscal year. So, we, we do have a lot of capital infrastructure-type projects that, that are underway, and we also have, you know, personnel issues around hiring and preparing for summer maintenance. I'm starting to feel as though I have, you know, with moving these two hiring processes forward, cleared up some of that, but I am, you know, trying to figure out the best tack on balancing projects like this, the, the parking lot out front and the accessibility improvements to the transfer, to the, to the town office. With other projects like the salt sand shed and the gravel road work that needs to be completed, not just at the transfer station this spring, but also gravel road work that has to happen throughout the town this spring, and then the follow-up work that will be happening this summer and fall, quite likely, that's been approved or will likely be approved, coming up with, with this town meeting. So, there's a lot of that type of activity going on, in addition, just, you know, the regular workload preparing for meetings. So, I, I was hoping to have a, a, a clear definition of all of the, all of the priorities I had, but actually, I was too busy to really put that together this week, so.
That's good, that's good.
It is, it's quite ironic, and I don't know how else to put it, but.
Gee, maybe you need a priority list.
Yeah, yeah, but now that the budget's pretty well squared away, I think that things will be changing.
That's a busy time of year.
It is, and, you know, I do need to do a lot of planning and preparatory work to make sure that, that we do, when we put bids out, that they go out and they're effective, and that we get the results we want, because otherwise, all that effort's for naught, if we have to turn things away. So, one of the questions I, I do have is, is what do you see as the, the capital priorities that are most important to, to this board? Would it be things like building improvements and the access work here, or focusing more on the transfer station access road and gravel road that's, work that's happening there, or more external, the, the gravel road work happening other places in town? And then we also have things like salt sand shed that are, that are a capital project, I mean, where do your interests and your thoughts fall on those types of projects?
Let me start.
All of them.
Yeah, they're, they're all important, but.
Well, thank you, that's very helpful, Catherine.
Okay, we're done.
The deal here is to lend a supportive ear, if you will, to what's kinda happening in a condensed period of time, and to, to, as a board, say, some of these priorities can be put further out, or, or, you know, and there are some budget considerations with that. For example, I think gravel roads are very important, because you, you just have to do the prep work in the spring to, to get ready to complete that, so I don't think there's any way around that. However, the parking lot, if you will, and the accessibility work to the front of this building, we are accessible now, okay? And without snow and ice in the front, we continue to be accessible, we're not accessible in the way that we want, and we have a vision for doing that and a plan for doing that, but I think if we could accomplish doing that prior to the November election, where we would have the heaviest use, if you will, I think that would be fine. Trying to pull that off for a much more immediate period of time, I think is, is, is not absolutely necessary. Be great to get everything done tomorrow, but we can't. So, one of my thoughts would be to push the parking lot and this accessibility, building accessibility refinement, I should say, because I believe we're accessible now, that can be pushed out. I would defer to you, I, I know that the transfer station is on everybody's mind.
It is, yeah.
Because they've driven in there, now, when they drive in there in July, it's gonna be a completely different road, so the goal on the transfer station road, if you will, is to, we're not gonna address it for this spring, is to really address it for the spring of two thousand and nineteen. So, it seems to me that however that work would flow for getting bids and so on and so forth, if you could time that out on a slower pace, but still accomplishing and looking forward to what we could do in two thousand and nineteen to have that road paved.
That's on, that's a part of the warrant.
It is.
Yes.
I actually disagree on that, I think it needs to be paved before winter, it needs.
Well, I, so it, yeah, for two thousand and nineteen.
To be ready for spring of two thousand and nineteen.
Right, right.
It's gonna have to be paved.
But I mean, that could be a fall job.
Yes, it can be a fall job, the paving.
Of twenty eighteen.
Of twenty eighteen, yes.
And the gravel, I think, isn't John Cushing doing some gravel work on that this spring?
He is, yeah, and then we're.
Kinda get it ready for, or get a good base, shape it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and so that, that can happen this spring, and it'll have the summer to settle, so I, I think that that's a very reasonable timeframe, and, and, you know, I think much as we have done this year, we. And, you know, I think much as we have done this year, we can do some of that other townwide gravel work in the spring. If it's approved June of 2018, it doesn't necessarily have to be done until April, May, June of 2019.
Yeah. Because you already have some roads planned for this spring.
Yeah.
For this spring. Yeah. Yeah. We're looking at phase two the following year. You know, my preference would be to have those two butt right up against one another and we can get the bids out this spring and then have that work happen, you know, May, June, July and be done with it, have the money expended and the work done altogether. But I think that that one certainly could move a little bit. Another project is the, that I think is probably worth considering pushing off at least till the fall would be the, as much as I hate to do it, and this is the struggle, the parking lot expansion for the fairgrounds. That would be fantastic to have that done. And maybe I should prioritize that more because of the safety issue that's been posed. So, I think that in talking about it, thinking about it, that, yeah, that's probably more of a priority than, say, working on some of the gravel roads that are for the field.
You've extended the parking, though, temporarily, right?
We have. Yeah. We have a field parking that is available.
So, it's not like we're parking on the road anymore.
That's correct. Yeah. We do have the ability to do something different. Yeah.
Well, it seems to me that it's the pacing of getting out the bids and so forth and the engineering. It's the end, once the work starts, I mean, other than inspecting the work on an ongoing basis is however you do that, that's a little bit different. It is really getting the project ready to launch.
Yeah. Getting all the balls up in the air in what order.
Yeah.
There's another one that we haven't really put in there, but I think we've said it, but it's listed here, too, is the transfer station operations.
Yeah. And that's another big one that I would love to get sorted out.
And I think that has some repercussions as we saw with the compactor breaking from maintenance and the way it was, the way the maintenance was taking place.
Yeah.
And one of the projects is to have the attendant shed be at the front of the line to make the traffic move at a better pace through and to collect the fees at a more reasonable level and a manner for the public that's more time managed. And I think that is a-
So, you're adding priorities.
No. That's already in there.
It is. It is. Yeah.
It was actually in a memo that he sent out to all the solid waste people. And so, I'm just, I mean, I guess as I'm looking at this, if the sand and salt, is the idea for the sand and salt shed to be repaired prior to this coming winter or just in the coming budget year?
It's an engineering study.
Well, it's engineering and then the, we do have funds put aside with the budget to repair it and the hope would be to repair it this summer and have it ready for the winter or summer and fall and have it ready for winter. However, it could also, you know, there's, we could find ourselves next spring with a shed that's almost empty and complete that work next spring as well. So, that one, I think, is one that could probably-
Is the shed empty now?
Slide. No. It's actually got probably 200 or 300 yards in it.
Oh, really?
And so, we're going to have to move some stuff around anyway to work on it. So, we might be in a better spot next spring. I don't know. But I see what you're saying about that and-
If it's not going to fall down between now and next, if it could have another's year's use without it deteriorating to a dangerous point, I think that would be one to-
You could put off till-
To put off till, I mean, not put it off forever, but I mean, you could have the engineering done and look at it-
Yeah.
As opposed to actually developing the RFP and so on.
And we have the money and the budget for this budget year.
Maybe having-
We do.
Right. So, it could be done in the spring.
Yeah. All we're doing is setting the time priority for things.
Right.
So, Guile's parking lot and the salt and sand shed, what I'm hearing is those could be pushed out.
Without there being a whole lot of impact.
Yeah.
And I would-
Unless, unless the engineer who looks at the salt and sand shed was to say that if we go another year, that that cement will really crumble and, I mean, I don't know if it's, I haven't seen it. I don't know how bad it is, but-
Yeah.
But we weren't going to have the engineer look at it. You have to get some, you have to do some work for the engineer.
Yeah. We've done some of that already. We met with a couple of firms and so, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting-
Who gave us some big numbers for doing a study? Is that correct?
We've had some big numbers. Yeah. We had, we had one set come in that was big.
Yeah.
About a third of the project cost. So, that's-
Yeah.
That's big.
Yes.
Yeah. So, we might need to revisit that anyway. If we get another number that's 10, $12,000, then we probably ought to go back to-
That was just to look at it.
Yeah. That was just to look at it. Yeah.
Just a, just a thought. We have some engineers on our road committee who are very familiar with structures. Matter of fact, they looked at the, at the bridge or the culvert-
Yeah.
On Old Kent Hill Road.
Yeah. And they've been the strongest advocates for getting outside expertise on this.
Ah, okay.
So, that's one reason why we went that direction. Originally, we hadn't planned on it and we met and talked about it and they said, "You know, we'd really like to get a structural engineer in here that does this and can get a very current and licensed opinion on it." So-
So, but we could cast that net wider a little later in the year.
We can, I think. And, I mean, we have something in process now and depending on how that shakes out, we might want to just keep going, but I'll keep it in mind that we certainly have the option and it wouldn't be the end of the world if we had that work done next spring as opposed to this fall.
So, and just again, trying to recap and assisting you with looking at these priorities, the Guile's parking lot and the salt sand shed could be timed out a little bit later. The gravel roads, you can manage the release of work in such a way that-
Yes.
Would be a little bit easier for you?
Yep.
I think whatever works best for you on that, I mean, I kind of like the idea of kind of get it all done together in a season that that might take less stress than trying to do it in two chunks, but I'm not the one doing it. So, I'm happy with however that works better from your perspective.
Cost-wise might be better as well if-
We do have to get two different bids for two different seasons.
Oh, yeah. We definitely have to get a second bid for the second set of work that's coming out.
Yeah. Because John Cushing already has.
The first set.
You got the first set. Yeah.
So, that kind of brings the transfer station concerns to the forefront as higher issues, if you will. And the parking lot fairgrounds, correct me if I'm wrong because I don't always understand the nuances of this, that should be fairly low-level.
It should be. Yeah. It's not the same level of work.
It's not like building up a road.
Yeah. No, not at all.
I mean, we're essentially putting gravel down and maybe some depth work to, you know, just determining where the stakes are going to go and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. And our staff can do the surveying, I guess is what I would call it. Yeah. To determine-
I would not call it surveying.
The layout.
The layout. There we go. Yeah. They use transit. I mean, come on.
I don't care.
My input on the parking lot is the big time of use there, the biggest time, is during Little League season.
Yeah.
And that's this spring and early summer.
So, you don't want to be doing it then.
Well, you want to have it ready for then or you want to do it after then.
Or do it after, yeah.
Because that happens kind of during the week and on the weekends.
And it's a pretty short duration when you look at it.
It is. So, I mean, if you can get it done before they start or at the very beginning of the season, I think it would be best-
Yep.
Because there's a real safety issue there on the road or at least make the transition like we did last year to having it marked clearly, "Don't park on the road. Here's the grass area that's been mowed. Park here." I mean, as long as one of those happens, I'm happy.
Right.
Yeah. I think if we do the temporary parking and make it known, we can put it off till after baseball season.
Yeah. Well, and I think it's certainly a more than satisfactory location. It's, you know, you have to go through a little bit of a wet spot, but that could be addressed. But it's on a very dry hill, easily accessible and actually makes access better for folks with mobility issues getting down to the field. So-
Just as an example, when we had the ball field dedication, it was, it was all utilized.
It worked very well.
How does that grant funding work on that little parking lot? Did it write as a check or we submit?
We have to submit. So, it's not a, it's not a-
Is there a time limit on when we submit?
I think we need to have it done by next spring.
Okay.
So, that would be your-
Yeah. I really want to get that done this fall.
Yeah. It's a good idea because then it'll all, it'll all settle and come back over the winter.
Yeah.
The only difference is you'll have to keep, have someone keep mowing at that part where we're going to have them park.
Yeah. But that's been not too-
And again, that's, I mean, it may be managed to be, to occur earlier. We just don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, my question to you, Eric, would be, was this useful in setting priorities? And you please do say no if that's the case.
No. It has been useful. Yeah. And I probably will be coming back over the course of the next couple of months and giving an update on where things stand and reassessing if necessary. But it's just, this is the time of year where, you know, and I have a kind of a skewed perspective too because my time over the past two or three months has been so condensed outside of, you know, budget process that, you know, I think that I'll probably be having more time than I'm planning on. But then again, if I do that, you know, it doesn't always work out. So, I just wanted to make sure that I had prepared by discussing with you some of the work that's going on, let you know that there are some competing priorities and getting your feedback on them. So, that's what we did and thank you.
Okay. Great.
Because, you know, you can always come to us. You got a full plate with-
That's what the purpose of this discussion was. So, good.
Yeah.
And this is just real evidence to me of the highlights of our last discussion when we did your personnel review of good planning and having heard what we had said and having come back to us with concerns that you have and bravo. Yeah.
Well, thank you for your support on it and, yeah.
By the way, I received a form on your review in the mail yesterday, last week.
Was it, I won't ask what was wrong, but I got a guess.
But it was all positive. So, we're not going to rescind anything.
You wanted to go under the file? I would make a motion to adjourn.
If I may, before we-
I was trying to-
Madam Woods. I just, I just wanted to remind people, we have the warrant hearing on the 26th and on April 30th will be the select board meeting. And this will save a little time for you. I'm suggesting that beginning in May, we go to meeting monthly until the fall at least. Is that received?
Other than needed workshops.
Other than needed workshops and there could be a special meeting or we have not had a lot of executive sessions at all this year and, but if for some reason one needed to happen, we could, we could call that. But we will start meeting monthly in May. Okay. Did you have a motion you wanted?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?